We'll call the meeting to order at 6:42. Thank you all for coming. We'll start out with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
People would remain standing. We'd like to take a moment of silence for the young girl, Olivia Miles, who passed away. The funeral was today. Both her parents, the mother works very closely in our dispatch center and the father is a sheriff. And we'd like to acknowledge that with a moment of silence for Olivia. We'll move on to public comment. Public comment is a period of time for those individuals who have comments that are not on a subject that's not already on the agenda and that's within our purview as a council. So is there anyone, if you do have public comment with a guess at it, come up, state your name and share your comments? Is there anyone who would love to share any comments?
I may be the only one. Hi, I'm Angie Sturm. I live in the city. I might be able to avoid my not very well-prepared comment by just asking about the item number 12 about the appointments to the BEI committee. I think that there's going to be a consideration of appointments of four different people. And my concern was that one of them was not going to be in consideration of appointment, Jennifer Williamson. And I don't know where that stands, if there's a simple answer about that, like I don't have to really talk much more, but I could go on.
Well, why don't you do that when we get to number 12?
Okay.
Okay?
When we get to number 12?
It's on the agenda.
Yeah, it's on the agenda. And this is a time for people that have a lot to talk about things that are not on the agenda.
Yeah.
So why don't we see when it comes up, number 12?
Well, it was under, it was my impression that it was not going to be on the agenda to consider Jennifer Williamson, who applied, even though the BEI committee requested that everyone who applied be considered. So I'm not going to be able to stay for that long. I have a little kid at home.
All four submitted an application. All four were interviewed.
Interviewed, yeah.
And then the choice was made at that time.
Right. My main concern, and I'll just state it in general, is that if this, if this is a, if this, to decline her to be on the committee has to do with having a disability, that's a really big problem. Because she's the only one who's identified as neurodiverse, neurodivergent. And like as an autistic person, she has a perspective that nobody else I know has. And as someone who's really close to her and getting to know her really well, I just see how she consistently shows up and brings more to every single conversation I've ever been in with her. There's every reason to include her on this committee. And I'm really confused as to why she's been denied three times. And the idea that it's because she lives in the town and only works in the city just doesn't, it doesn't really hold water. And also the argument that like maybe like she's the alternate person that the committee asked for, and it's an eighth person and not a seventh person, doesn't hold water either because eight people were originally appointed. And one of those eight people were far right wing, like very flamboyant, really well-known antagonist to change. So that...
Angie, we're gonna...
You're gonna get to that?
We're gonna move on.
All right. I will tune in by Zoom from home. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else has public comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to the election of the council president.
Nominee Chad Schooner for council president.
Nomination for Chad Schooner. Is there anyone else?
Second.
Second, third, or fourth? So Chad, you want to accept that position?
Looks good.
On your resume.
One more year.
Chad will accept for one more year, so...
He said that in 1991.
That's a chat.
So we have a motion made to appoint Chad to council president.
Nomination. A nomination.
A nomination. Thank you. And we have a second. Although the favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Hearing none, Chad will continue as our council president. Thank you, Chad. Appreciate it. We will now exit our existing meeting and open up the liquor control commission. So Nicole, are you...
Okay, so I requested this to be put on the agenda just for a couple of reasons. Pass out something. Hearing no, you don't have one, please. Just go around the... We had a liquor approval, or liquor license approvals for various businesses, and they're allowed to sell liquor and food on the perimeter of their properties. Nourish, for one, Mimos, Nellies, Twigs, Cityside, and maybe a couple of others in there that I'm forgetting right now. However, when we approved Cityside, the application was for the building. She was not ready to leave. I called her back in, in the meeting, and requested, or asked her whether or not she was going to use the portion of the property. And she said, yes, she wanted to. So we changed the application so that would entail using the new sidewalk that we just installed on Kingman Street. For the Kingman Fest, they ended up utilizing the front of the building and the side of the building. They were told by the control that they had to shut down the side of the building because the application was only for the front of the building and only for their deck on the side of the building. Now, if you're not familiar with the property, that's the sidewalk that leads into the garage. And it abuts the, it abuts the...
Derringer.
Derringer parking lot. So I, Nicole made all the changes that she could make. And my thought was, just bringing this to the board's attention, is when we try to issue these licenses to give these people as much leeway as we can, especially the business people in downtown, so that they can utilize the space that's available to them. And the picture that you have in front of you is what went on there this Saturday. And they had a two-piece band there. It was very nice setup. They had some people on the side. The sidewalk was certainly wide enough for the two tables that they had on the inset of the, of the deck on the side. So Chip made the suggestion that when they have events like that, that they could request that the sidewalk be shut down. And I think that's, that's good to do. Nicole outlined the steps in order to get that processed. But I just want us to keep in mind that I think we should try and allow this type of business to go on as much as we can in the city during the summer months. Because it was a very nice setting on Saturday. They would walk down that street. And here, and it's not some big rock band, you know, banging their head up against the building. It was a very quiet, this was a one or two-person band. The week of the fest, they had Jen Heemond and her husband. I forget the name of their...
Barbie.
Barbie and the Bones?
She was there, Barbie. She was just for the husband.
Okay. And they were very light, would be the kind of music you'd think you'd go to on Church Street, or like if you went to a sidebar or something like that. I just thought it was very nice. And I just would like to have an ear to that on the pavement, on that type of event happenings in the city of St. Albans, and that it not be allowed for some particular places and not other places. So that's why I brought this to the control board's attention at this meeting. All right? Not that there's anything wrong, not that anything went wrong, it's just that they were a little surprised. And they did exactly what the liquor board told them to do, as far as the food setup or the liquor setup during the Kingman Fest. And the liquor board had no problem with it. They did what they were supposed to do, and so they were all set. But I was just, you know, I felt kind of bad for them because they had some nice stuff set up and they weren't able to do it. And we tried to fix it after that. I think we've done the best that we can do so far. But just when these applicants come before the liquor control board, I'm sure the state has a process to go through, that we just make sure that Nicole has everything that she needs so that she can prepare the application, so that they can utilize the entire boundary of their unit or their property, so they can get as much money as they can during the summer months. It's like having the festival in the park. And, you know, Twigs opening up the doors so that people can hear them. Nellies around the corner, and having a little band down there, so...
So who called them on the carpet? You lost them.
I'm not sure. Someone just contacted the liquor control board, and the liquor inspector said, yeah, you know, your permit doesn't allow you to do this, but you got it from the city. And that's what put us on notice that there was something wrong. And they called me up, all right, because I represented them on some things in the past. So they called me up, and I said, well, let's see what the application says. And the application was filled out properly, but it didn't have that they could use, utilize the east side property all the way to the curbing of the Derringer parking lot, which has the stones on it, which you can see from the people set up right there.
Can they, can they, can they bring their alcohol, like near the parking lot?
They can't. No, they can't. Currently, they can't do it because their permit's not set up for that. They can only use the limit of their, of their portion.
So our suggestion to the owner would be to come back with amended permit?
No. We granted that. We were able to do that through our own control functions. But Chip brought up a policy or a regulation that the sidewalk wasn't wide enough for them to be able to operate that way. There has to be a certain percentage of, or a certain number of feet around the tables, which is four feet. On the new streetscape stuff that we've done, there's plenty for that, there's plenty of room for that. But on this particular sidewalk, given the stones on both sides, you couldn't, you can't do it that way. So we were trying to, you know, put a thread through that needle, and we're not able to do it. And Chip thought of, you know, when you're going to have an event, why don't you just call us, the city up? Have them call the city, after the city will just shut the sidewalk down, and then they have all the air they need to do it. Nicole, the process for that is to Nicole, to Chip, then the application to the liquor control board. And I think, you know, that's, they're trying to do this stuff every Saturday, or every nice day, and it's kind of hard, you know, to, you know, just for the mechanics of that to happen, you know, they'd be doing it every week coming up here.
Would people just leave the parking garage if the sidewalk shut down and walk through the parking lot between Tim's house and the building?
Yeah, they end up walking through the parking lot. And some of them can walk down that way. But, you know, I just think it's too bad if we can't figure a way to get that business so they can get as much help as they can. Now that I'm looking up over Chad's head, if you could look at how that is set up there and how those tables can be out there, it's kind of, they kind of want the same kind of thing, you know? And it's like Nourish started using their Kingman Street side for their tables, which is really great, because now they've got, they can put eight people out there instead of four. And so they get to use that. And that's what these guys are trying to do.
Who owns the sidewalk? So my only concern is...
I'm wondering if the city owns it, or if these are, I'm sending right of way through. I don't, I think the, I think the perimeter of the building goes all the way to the curb. And I think the city just has a right of way down that. I'm not sure. Don't call me, but I just think that's the way it is, but it might not be.
This curb?
Yeah, I think the, I think the property boundary is right to the curbing of...
Well, the city, the city built the sidewalk, flashed the trees, flashed the sidewalk. Yeah. So my only, my only concern, Tim, is people that can't use those stairs and may have mobility issues, and that's their way to the parking garage. So I, I would prefer they take a couple parking spots in front.
Do you see anything wrong with that picture there in front of you, Chad?
No, I see nothing wrong with that. But if we're shutting down the sidewalk, then my father-in-law would have to go all the way down, all the way across, and then up. Or just continue down late. But if he doesn't know it's shut off in between, but would, is there any flexibility to block off a couple parking spots in front and roping those off?
What if you pass the motion to allow the sidewalk to be used on a trial basis for the balance of the summer, so long as it remains passable to pedestrians?
That works. I just want to make sure that someone can get through there with a chair.
Yeah. I mean, I think they're kind of, they'd be kind of happy with the setup that you see in front of you right now.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. The stones really stink because...
And too, they do have permission, that was granted, plasticated, they can use that front section on Kingman Street. They can go to the front and down the side.
Yeah.
And they're like doing this, they're...
Yeah, yeah. It was really, it was really a nice setup. It's exactly what we wanted to see there, exactly what we anticipated when we had the Kingman Street remodel was to, or the streetscape project on, this is exactly the type of thing we wanted to see.
So if we approve it, it sounds like the process, my question to you was going to be, how would we notify the liquor board? But there's a process that would be in place.
Yeah, we're just going to rely on Nicole to get us through.
I would just need to get something in writing, you know, that's specific, to update their outdoor permit.
So Dom, is there any reason we put, the stones there really stink.
They, they are terrible. They are terrible.
They're on the sidewalk all the time. Is there a reason we put the stones there and not try to grow grass or just make it all concrete?
It was grass, and it became, it became the melting pot for all the animals and stuff, and it became dead grass, and piles of other things. So, you know, so...
We built that, like, way back, right? When we built the parking garage, before we had done this Kingman Street streetscape. You know, my, the reason I was suggesting was to do it for the summer, just let's give them a sense of, get a sense of what works there. It's not crazy to think about coming back and doing some enhancements to the sidewalk, so that it can work for this use, right? It's a different bar there now than was there then.
Yeah. Just say if you have a couple little concrete pads in between those trees or something.
Yeah, I mean, there's all kinds of design, you know, solutions, but that's 12 months away.
And because this is, because they're using this, there's no smoking, right?
No. There's, oh, well, there is...
They're using it as a bar, or...
There is, they can use the deck for smoking and for, as a bar.
Okay.
Yeah. But they weren't allowed to have anything off that deck. And they weren't allowed to have any, any service outside the front door area. So they had the front door area up to the perimeter that the permit said, up to the curbing of Kingman Street, and they had a little setup there, so that as people walked in, they didn't have to grow the bar because they were eight deep at the bar. You know, so they were trying to get people service as they went in. And so when that got shut down, they moved a two-piece band that was supposed to be inside the bar to outside of the bar, all right, so that enough people could fit into the bar.
Okay, so city managers made a suggestive motion, or made an suggestion, because I don't want to turn that into a motion.
I'll make a motion that we allow the city side to utilize the east side of the property to the property limit, provided they keep access open to the garage.
Second. Any other comments?
Except for one year, for just the season or end of February?
Yeah, it won't be, it won't be in the winter time, so it'll just be during the same months as the parks open.
Then they have to re, they have to come back in next year for their repermit.
Oh, okay.
We should see how it works. If it doesn't work...
Hopefully it will.
And when the audience have any comments? No? All right, although the favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Hearing none, motion passes. Nicole, you'll work with city side to get, move that forward. Thank you.
I'll contact you on C-12.
Number seven, consider the creation of energy advisory committee.
I moved out of recess from liquor control board.
Thank you, Chad. The motion, come back out of the liquor control board, back to the meeting. Second. Although the favors, say aye?
Aye.
Now, we'll move to seven, which is the consider the coalition, creation of an energy advisory committee. In your packet, you have a review of the charge. So Dom, you had worked on that, do you want to share your, your overview on that?
In the back of the packet are some example documents from how other communities have handled it. A sample from Essex. There's, it's a little bit longer. Some suggested language from aspiring members locally here. And then we've also got the charge from the South Burlington Energy Committee. So we took all of that and tried to thread the needle in a simple one-page document that was similar to how we have structured advisory committees in the past.
And if you have any questions, is Dom?
I had one comment on this, came in by email. And the comment was, is this going to be a committee that's going to tell me that I can't use my weed whacker that I have, that's operated like the city of Burlington? And I said, I don't think so, but I'll at least bring it up at the, at the meeting, so...
So when it was brought up, first up round, my suggestion was there would be no mandates as to everyone has to have an electric mower, everyone has to have an electric weed whacker, you have to have an electric leaf mower. There wouldn't, and I, that was going to be one of my suggestions. I think we need to specify that as well, that we're not going to, the committee will not be mandating expectations.
I remember when they first came, I believe, they talked about being more proactive and incentivizing people to be more conscious of their energy usage. Am I correct?
More educational.
Yes.
Dom, I really liked the first sentence that South Burlington used. The charges, South Burlington Energy Committee is to promote energy conservation, energy efficiency, and the use of renewable energy resources among the city's residents. Okay. I know there's a couple folks that have been following this. Folks, if anyone wants to come up and comment?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make, you, you come up. I just want to make the point while she's coming up, it says, you know, the second to last paragraph, this is an advisory committee whose members serve a budget council, so it's an advisory committee. So they're not mandating anything anyway, so...
Thank you, Chad.
One of the, Mary Harbaugh, at Commerce Street, aspiring committee member. One of the documents that you have was a quick rough draft that I offered as a, hit the ball rolling document. I've since made it shorter, I don't know if I'm too late to the party here, but I, I made it a little tighter and a little easier to grasp.
Thank you.
Did I, I guess, I'm going to give you a couple extra.
Chad.
And let's see. So for all the worries that people have about our haranguing someone or mandating, we're an advisory committee, and you'll see that at every step, we want to be with the city. So if we write a plan, we want you to approve it. If you're not happy, don't approve it. If we develop a project, I'm presumptuous, I'm assuming you're going to appoint me, but if we develop a project, we want you or Dom to approve it before we get started. So we, we feel passionate about this, but we understand the way forward is with the city. This is not a, some kind of independent, do whatever we want group. This is a, a way to help the city get more done. I personally am interested in writing grants for state and federal funds that the city would apply for. I'm proposing that we help, that we research projects, we develop the rough drafts, we write grants and submit them to you all, to Dom or to Chip or whoever it is, and go from there. It's just a way to use volunteers to get more done when the city is really a busy, this is a busy place, you guys have a lot going on. And so first, that's just to reassure anyone who's concerned about whatever worries anyone has. And I would suggest that the timing is really good right now. The city plan is being updated. If it's not currently being updated, the hazard mitigation plan should probably be updated. It was written in 2017, and it doesn't address a lot of things we know we're going to face. It's terrific. What's there, it just needs updating. And I'm not saying that we're necessarily the ones to do that, but we can certainly contribute to that effort. There is, for example, on Thursday, the State Agency of Natural Resources is gearing up for a municipal vulnerability index, the climate change, in which they will provide tools for us to assess with new data what our vulnerability is for various hazards. So there's a lot going on at the state level, at the national level, with government agencies, with think tanks, and all kinds of sources for information. And it's a lot to try to keep up with, but we'd like to help. There's a lot of state and federal money in the pile right now. Vcan, the Vermont Energy and Climate Action Network, is that right? Just had a meeting, I wasn't able to attend, but a couple of other folks here were. And much of it was about, here's all this money, here's how to get addressed to municipal energy committees. And of course, the title, Energy Committee, is a, is a fine one, but it's about 15 years old. Energy committees are now moving into climate, but because, when I say climate, I mean both mitigation and adaptation, that is, how to keep it from getting worse and how to deal with what's coming, no matter what. So the, the reason that I care about using climate terminology is because when you apply for grants, you need to show that your city has anticipated these things, just as in the city plan and in a climate plan and a hazard mitigation plan, all of these official city documents use language that grant givers expect to see. So you'll see that both in the, in my proposed title for the committee and in the descriptions of the kinds of things we would undertake. I think that language is important. So for example, in, if we're looking to mitigate climate change impacts, one thing to do is to plant trees. Now, we're already planting trees, but if we use the right language around it, there might be money to do more, or different, or, you know, maybe we could work with, with an organization like this, advisory board like this, could maybe work with the schools, which is not something you typically have the city staff doing, to, to come up with a partnership, to plant more trees at schools or something.
St. Albans City School just did, gave 100 trees to people with TBOS.
We have five of them.
Yeah.
You're hoarding a mirror?
What's that?
You're hoarding them?
Two for us, two for the dot card. So, and the other thing I would just say is that in these federal and state funds are grants, if we need it, for project management and grant administration. So I know that additional effort on our part adds to the workload of the staff because we're asking you all to approve it and review it and consider it and connect the dots. But if we need sort of project management help, or if we need grant administration help, there are grants for that. So I just think there's a lot of talent and energy and goodwill available to the city at a time of rapid change, and I hope that you will help us help you. Thank you.
And good for your interest.
So Mary, and please, anyone here, just let me know. So what you handed us today seems much more focused...
Yes.
...than the charge that we put together, which is very broad. And this seems like steps that we would do if given this charge.
Well...
With, with, of course, you'd have to add some, some bits about the climate portion.
More like an action...
Yes. This, where this is very broad and says they'll work under this umbrella, and it seems like what you've given us is, here's the steps we're going to take.
I just, in my personal experience with charge letters, you don't need to be very specific, but committees... very specific, but committees, so, I have confidence in my doing a good job and you're thinking I'm doing a good job, but if I get run over by a truck tomorrow and somebody else is appointed, it's good to have everyone on the same page about how a committee will function and, and how the pieces fit together. So I think it's, my suggestion to you, I mean, would be, it's good to give a little bit of, of a framework, so that a future city council comes in and says, who are these guys and what are they doing and how are they working? There's, there's some sort of common understanding, expectations about, about what we'll do. So, the other thing is, some of that specific phrasing in there, my husband who's here, helped me realize that reducing greenhouse gas emissions is different from drawing down greenhouse gas emissions. The first one has to do with electric vehicles, for example, you're reducing emissions. And the second one has to do with something like planting trees, where you're pulling down carbon. So there, it's the, that specificity is useful in, potentially useful in applying for grants or in talking to various potential partners or supporters or asking for layers of support or any of those kinds of interactions with other.
Is that important in the charge or is that important in the committee's plan?
I would think both, but are you thinking it's too specific?
So I'm thinking, hey, I want to get to, if I tell my kids, hey, I want you to go to the grocery store and get A, B, and C, that's kind of like the charge. And what you're telling means, okay, you're going to go across south Elm, you're going to go across north Elm, you're going to go up well, you know, lower welding, you're going to go on Main Street. So whereas I just said, go to the grocery store and get the groceries.
I think if, if there was broad introductory language, that would, I mean, we could certainly work with that. I think it would be the potential for misunderstanding in the future is greater without some kind of framework, I think. You know, again, if it's not me and if it's not you, new committee, new advisory committee member, new city councilors, and I think it's useful to have a framework, but your call, obviously, we would be happy to work. I personally would be happy to work with something broad.
Okay. Thank you.
Would you want to take a shot at combining the two potentially and work with Mary or in some of the council?
So let me, let me just point out some of the things that are already in here, right? I think it's important to, Mary, that the word climate be in there. I'm hearing that. And that's in the second warehouse clause, right? That we recognize this contributed to climate change, so, you know, if there is objection, you can amend the title of the committee to climate. You know, this was drafted to try to thread the needle a little bit, to say you don't have to necessarily buy in the climate change to support this committee, but that's not a concern. You know, I also hear Mary saying, what we really want to do is develop a climate action plan. Because for us, it's about climate and energy is a piece of that, but we want to develop a climate action plan. While the committee might achieve their mission through the development of action plans, is what it says.
I'm sorry, say again?
The language right after the charge says, the committee may achieve this mission through the development of action plans. It, you know, it lists some other things. You know, so I, I don't want, there's no pride of authorship here, right? But I think a lot of the things that we're talking about are
Right, I would agree.
are already there. You know, this is really way more specific, this is a work plan. This is way more specific than is typically in our committee charges. And what our committee charges are only looked at every decade or so, right? So, our thought was to try to launch the committee. But I'm happy to take another draft that incorporates the word climate, I'm happy to take another draft that provides more, more of a work plan. That's just more management and direction than the council typically does. The council typically says, have at it.
But in the past week, we have, we have reviewed and made changes of charges in the past. We've gone back and forth on a couple of different ones.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm just trying to, I'm unclear what changes you want me to make. Do you want it, you want, you want me to take this and incorporate this into it?
I see, I, I like a broad brush, and I, I like an action plan that the committee would develop with the steps to meet the charge. Does that, but that's just my opinion. I think both are great, but I think they, the action plan will, will be more of a working, changing document as you go through your work as a committee, or this would stay the same. In my mind, this changes and is more fluid, or this will be around for the long haul.
Excuse me just a moment, I don't know, I think there may be other people here to speak, I don't want to monopolize your, your public comment here. So, do you have any more questions for me?
I don't think so, Mary. Thank you for coming in. Is there anyone else who would like to say a few comments, few words?
So I'm Jim Styles from 100 Congress Street.
How are you?
Good. And, you know, in terms of the form of the charge letter takes, I'm pretty open to a broader phrasing or a narrower phrasing, you know, it's, it's up to us to make it happen. And if we, you know, as long as we have, as long as it's within the charge, and I think it does need to address climate, but to announce one, I think is correct, that that's something I feel is important as well. The only other thing I wanted to sort of bring up is I hope that we can do quite a bit of educational work, and I'm just hoping that, well, I mean, it'll take us a little time to figure out the correct processes and all that for, is setting up a meeting to seek comment from the public on, you know, how they would like us to proceed with electric vehicles or, I mean, the number of issues out there involving energy and environment is very broad, so that's going to be a bit of a work in progress. I won't, you know, advisory is, you know, is the function, but we need to do investigation, public outreach and all that stuff, so I just would hope that, you know, we have a good collaborative arrangement with those people who, you know, normally from the day to day city stuff. Very important to make that stuff work well. And, I mean, that was really mostly it. I give examples and respond to any questions, especially about the more technical stuff, that's kind of my, my big thing.
Anyone have any questions for Jim?
Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. How are you?
How about yourself? Saw your daughter the other day.
I'm BB Potter, and I live at 65 Bank Street. I'm the one that asked Mike the question about this, put on the agenda. I 100% agree with what Mary and Jim said. I've been ramping up my own learning curve, I was at the VECAN, and my, my senses, education, community awareness, community engagement, those are all really critical. The young people are, you know, really concerned about climate, and I think there's a certain amount of angst out there, and I think it kind of stalls people, they don't know where to go, there's so much, and I often felt that way, and I've just been reading and reading and reading and really getting a grasp, and I went to VECAN with Jim, and I just, I think including climate, including the community, and making the changes that we need to do to prepare for what's coming ahead and to make the, you know, the world more livable for children and grandchildren, and so, and want to thank you for considering this. Again, Mary's done so much work, and she's such technical, and Jim as well, so I'm just kind of a, I don't know, passionate, I guess, so, thank you.
Thank you, BB.
Anything you don't want included?
No, I think we should add climate, at least into the title.
We'll take another cut.
Do we want to take another cut at it, or do we want to approve with proposed changes? We take another cut at it over the month, right, or can we start advertising? We don't have a committee, we haven't agreed yet.
That would be my, take another cut at it, be ready to go, we can, we can advertise, as we know the interview process doesn't happen overnight.
Yeah. We don't want to delay it another month, is why we add a paragraph or a couple sentences and change the title.
But we, but we can move forward on the interview until that's been done.
Unless anyone totally against it.
Make the motion.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to approve the Energy and Climate Committee with Dominic doing some changes to the charge to include some more climate action items.
Second. Uh, well, Dom, do you, do you want to address the interview and advertising at this time?
Uh, usually, I don't think we usually address that.
Staff should have that.
Yeah.
So you just put an ad out, who's interested, people apply?
Staff can move forward without the charge.
Yeah, I think we can.
Be a month of advertising anyways.
We have a sense of where the council's headed and reflect that in the current materials.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All over the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, motion passes. Thank you all for coming in, appreciate that. We're going to move on to item number eight, three items that Chip will be presenting on. Chip, if you want to join us.
Thank you. First thing is a resolution to approve a request to add to two loans that we have for water and sewer on the Canyon Street project, it would allow us to access some of the subsidy funds that came with the loan. And with that, the project is totally within budget, with all the funding sources available. So the resolution authorizes the two loan amendments that are in your packet and authorizes Dom, me, or Sarah to sign those and send them into the state.
Motion to approve Canyon Street loan amendment.
Second.
Motion second, any comments? Any comments in the audience? Hearing un, all over the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, motion passes.
Thank you. Next item is a, what you've got in your packet is a standard grant agreement for one of our VCDP grants. This one's for Champlain Housing Trust to continue the home repair loan program that they've been, that we've been helping them get access to VCDP funds for. Many of those projects do occur in the city, and VCDP requires that once the grant agreement is ready, that the local legislative body signs a resolution like this, saying that we can enter into the agreement, that Dom's the authorized representative, I'm the administrator, and this is the way we do all of our VCDP grants.
Do we actually grant anything? Do we actually move any grant money out of our funds?
We have a little bit of money budgeted for our lawyers to review the sub-grant that, that we have to enter into the CHT.
That's it?
Yeah.
Motion to approve home repair loan grant agreement.
Second.
That's motion second on the grant home repair. Any comments, questions, for Chip?
How, how would people find out about this? Like, is it, is it common knowledge? Because when I, I'd never heard of it before, and it's a pretty, it's a pretty nice program.
It's a nice program. You know, CHT, in the age of social media, they do use their social to do it, but they also have brochures that they've put out, and they have the materials available for folks who come to them asking for assistance. They might, I think I've seen ads in the papers as well, online ads, and every, it's something that we highlight, when there's a prop, when there's a distressed property and the owner lives there, the city
You'll suggest it.
city will suggest this to them, yeah, this program to them as well.
That's great.
It's a good resource for the region to have.
We did approve that, right? Motion in second. There's a motion in second, already. Come, come on. All over the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
This one, print on that side.
Item number three, Chip, resolution to apply for sales tax reallocation.
We've done these a couple times, one for Lake Street with the hotel, and then the other one, we did two rounds of it for the Congress in Maine building, but what this program does is it takes some of the sales tax that a large private development would pay for the construction, they would pay that sales tax to the state, and instead, that money is essentially funneled back into the municipality for a public project that's associated with that private development. And in the case of this one, which is Lake and Maple, the proposed residential development at, at the corner of Lake and Maple Streets, there are some public improvements that we want to do. There's a new sidewalk to build, and there's some utilities that we want to underground, and this grant could pay for those activities. So, this is the required resolution to, that's required of the city council as part of the application.
So how do we, how do we know how much we're going to give? How much of our sales tax is going to be allocated to this? How do we know that? Who comes up with that percentage?
The, the private developer certifies the sales tax that they and their subcontractors paid. The state takes 100,000 of it, and the rest can be funneled back into the public project.
It's just the sales tax on that project?
Yeah, just the sales tax on that project. And it's basically anticipatory, actually, they, there's a point at which we can ask for half of the funds, and we sort of give them an update on how the private project is going, and then there's a point at the end where we can, where we invoice the state for the rest of the funds.
Is this, have we done this before, or is this new?
We've done this before.
Give me an example of one.
So when the hotel was built, we used this grant as part of the funding for the Lake Street, Streetscape project. And Congress in Maine, we used this funding for part of our work on the brownfields and the parking lot and the parts that the city owns. In fact, we went, we went to the state again during that project and said, hey, the private development's paying more sales tax, and we asked for the first time around, could we have a little bit more? And the state actually approved another round of that grant.
So we request it, the state approves it?
Yeah.
So the, are the numbers right? It says it's going to have an excess of 100,000, but we're asking for 639,000.
So the way the program works is that the state's going to keep that first 100,000. And, and essentially what it means is that the development, the developers assume they're actually going to pay 739,000 in sales tax.
Okay, got it.
State keeps the first 100,000, and then this requests the rest.
Got it, okay, thank you.
There's a similar program for manufacturing, an obstructive manufacturing site, the threshold's actually a million dollars, they pay the, well, they pay the sales tax on the first million, and after that, it's forgiven, it doesn't get reinvested into a infrastructure project, but it does get forgiven. Who would be against that?
We're going to find out in one minute.
All right, I'll make motion to approve it. Resolution to apply for sales tax reallocation early, for Maple Housing. We have a motion, is our second?
I'll second.
Second, by Mary. Any comments, concerns? Did you answer your question, Jim? No one? All over the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes.
I mean, technically, Tim, someone from another town could say, hey, that's
That's our, that's our money.
It's our money that you're using.
Yeah, that was kind of like our tiff.
Right.
The tiff I've been getting. All right, Chip, do you have another one for Spectrum Youth Center?
Spectrum opened up their location on Lake Street, they received $300,000 from VCDP to help make that happen, and To help make that happen, and the project is over. They received their grant funds. This is the required step we've done for many of these grants is that VCDP does require that we have a final public hearing, open a hearing, close it, for any public comments. But it also gives the granted, granted agency a chance to answer any questions about the project. And we have Mark Redmond and Mike Grant, maybe someone else. I don't know who iPad is, iPad is. But we have those folks from Spectrum on Zoom right now.
Hello, everyone. This is Mark Redmond. And our finance director is here also, Mike Grant.
Hi, Mike Grant, Finance Director, Spectrum.
So Chip, should I have a statement to read? Should I read that, or is this just my opportunity to answer questions?
You can answer questions. You can read the statement, but you get points for brevity.
Oh, good. It'll be quick. All right. So since opening in March of 2021, we've had 419 individual youth complete intakes. We can have anywhere from 15 to 40 youth coming through the door on any given day. We serve lunch and dinner every day. We have a lot of local community members and businesses signing up for our meal train, including Mill River every Thursday, Ben and Jerry's every month. On any given day, we have youth accessing a shower and hygiene supplies, doing laundry, coming in for meals, using the wifi, getting clothing and shoes from our donation closets. Unfortunately, camping gear for those youth who are homeless and participating group and make new friends. We wear two hats. By day, we function as a support for youth to get their basic needs met, referrals for services such as our youth development program, NCSS, Adolescent Support Services, Franklin Grand Isle Restorative Justice Center, and other organizations. And in the afternoon, we function as a youth center where youth come after school for activities and socialization. Finally, we see a lot of food insecurity, especially at the end of the month. We have a large number of neurodivergent youth, youth with social anxiety. And a large portion of our youth are from the LGBTQ plus community. And many of our youth have had involvement with the DCF Family Services and have been or that are in foster care. A lot of these youth are looking for their first job. And we helping them with that. We helping them find work. And those who struggle to maintain employment, we help them to keep their jobs and refer them to our friends at Higher Ability. So that's, Chip, that's a little summary, a brief summary of what we've been doing. I'm very pleased. I think you may know Champlain Housing Trust even approached us last year. And we have, for youth who are homeless, we have three apartments over in the Vista Apartments that youth sublease from us and pay some rent. So in the future, we would love to, we know there are more youth who are living in the woods or living in cars or living in someone's garage. So in the future, if we're able to expand their shelter capacity, we'd love to do that. So anything, what else? What have I missed? Or what questions do people have for me or for Mike?
Mark, this is Tim Smith, a quick question. How did you utilize the 300,000? Was that all in the leasehold improvements?
So I will let Mike answer that.
Yeah, so it's kind of a mixed bag, right? So we, we spend, you know, we spend approximately, you know, 290,000 a year for the operations of the, of the facility. So a lot of it is, goes towards salaries, improvements, food, rent, obviously. So, you know, the major, major expenses you would think of in maintaining a shelter like that. Very helpful. You know, it basically allowed us to operate for free for a full year, which was a fantastic revenue source for us.
Thank you. Mike or Mark, it's Tim Hawkins. What's the age, average age? Give me an age range that you expect to see come through your doors.
You know, that's a great question. You know, in our drop-in center in Burlington, most of the kids are 18, 19, 20. So we opened in St. Albans, we're, let's see who shows up. Most of the kids are like 13, 14, 15. Can you imagine? And I, and I think that, we do have some older kids, but a lot of younger. And I think that's because in Burlington, we have the Boys and Girls Club, the King Street Center, the Sarah Holbrook Center, YMCA. And there really aren't those resources in St. Albans. So we're seeing a lot of younger kids, you know? They may not be homeless, but they may be couch surfing or in very precarious family situations. You know, I asked a young man, he was 14, I said, why do you come here every day? And he said, to escape the violence in my home, which was a very sobering thing for me to hear. So it is younger. It's younger than we see in Burlington.
Any other questions? Anyone in the audience have a question?
Just a comment. Great job you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for applying for it. It was you who had to apply for it. You know, as Peter Welch's office told us. Thank you for going through and Mike, thanks through all the hoops you've gone through. Federal grants are never easy. And thank you Mayor Tim Smith for doing a sleep out last March. He was, he was the last one out there, Dominic, the last one.
Why does that not surprise us? Everything he does.
I think that has to do with his family situation.
All right, next year I expect to wake me up before everyone leaves.
I'll go over, I will nudge you, all right? Then Mr. Mayor, I'll nudge you. We'll let you out there alone next time. Wake up all alone.
Appreciate that.
Were you the last one to show up, Mr. Mayor?
All right, anything else, Chip?
We want to continue our stand. We're very grateful to all of you, Kingman's Trust.
Thank you, guys, for joining us. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
All right.
Thank you.
Chip, you're set?
Yeah, we're set for that.
Just need a motion?
Uh, no, just open and close the hearing.
All right, we'll move on to item number 10. We're not going to table until next month.
Yeah. There's no, there's no one here to talk about that anyway.
Still late to wake up.
All right, we'll move to the conceptual approval of the Federal Street sidewalk plans. So just to lay the groundwork, I'm not sure who is here initially. Amy was here. Mitch was here for sure. Kathy, David, so. And discussion about the plans relative to Federal Street. Might tie into the Mississippi Valley Rail Trail and being a little more user friendly, I guess is safe to say, connecting the rail trail to the downtown corridor. And I think council took that to heart. Chip had some conversations and he wanted to.
Yeah, the, this was originally proposed as a very small phase of the overall Federal Street connector project. We got a little federal, well, we got a federal grant to do the sidewalks on both sides of Federal Street. One needs to be reconstructed on the west side or on the east side. And on the west side, there's no sidewalk. And we got into the planning progress for that. And it, you know, it proceeded along sort of slowly because we got other projects we're working on. And then we find out that B-Trans is planning to get some funds to extend the Mississippi Valley Rail Trail from Main Street down to the intersection of Lower Newton and Federal. And it's actually a way of bringing the rail trail a little closer to downtown, but not quite all the way. And the local walk bike group contacts us and says, hey, we really want to look at this project again. Had some, voiced some support for various different options, but most strongly for a shared use path, which is wider than a sidewalk, but typically, like a sidewalk, it's on its own. It's not right on the street. It's set apart from the street a little bit, like the rail trail itself. And it's typically wider than a sidewalk, 10 feet or more. And can be, can be made of various different products. Can be made of concrete, asphalt, crushed gravel, all kinds of things. And so we had a meeting, we had a couple of meetings with them. And we went back to VHB, our engineer, and said, what would happen if we wanted to put a shared use path on this corridor instead of these two sidewalks? So we've come up with this plan that re, that builds the new sidewalk on the west side of Federal Street. But on the east side replaces that sidewalk with a 10-foot shared use path. And this one is proposed to be asphalt, as many typically are. It actually means that there's less, there's a little bit less of a differential between the proposed sidewalk and the asphalt shared use path because asphalt is cheaper than the concrete. And VHB at first blush says, yeah, the geography's work. We think we can get into this and, and get a 10-foot wide path through there. So this would extend from Nor, from Lower Newton. And it would, it would be finessed, and final design would be finessed at that end for the traffic signal we planned to put there. And the best way to get people from the rail trail to Federal Street will be figured out as a final detail. But then it would run along the west side of Federal Street. And it would end somewhere around Kingman Street. It gets you into the downtown. And if you need to get off your bike at that point and get to wherever you parked your car or walk into a bike rack and go to a restaurant, then that's what you'd be able to do. And so this is, is a change to the project, but it, it doesn't pivot the whole thing. It's an augmentation that we have a path forward to get the additional funding necessary to, to, to make this part of the project in addition to the fact that the overall construction estimate for the project, for the project's gone up anyway. And we are going to need to pursue some more state and federal funds to build it. The shared use path actually gives us a better case to do that. So we are seeking the council's support to, to now pursue that, that pathway for the project, get the financing complete, get the final design done, and, and build it.
So that blue dash line is at the current right of way? So we wouldn't have to acquire more right of way?
Yeah, we wouldn't have to acquire more right of way. So the path goes toward the street. And there are a couple telephone poles that would have to be moved. But, you know, that's what they have to fund these for. And actually, sometimes we have to pay for that anyway.
So it doesn't look like there's going to be much greenbelt, if any?
Correct.
No trees?
We'll, we'll have to have VHB, when they, when they really start fine tuning this. If there's a place to put trees, we'll, we'll still try and put in trees.
That's a pretty popular path for the kids to walk, walk to school too, I'm assuming?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know they do their walking Wednesdays.
So we got bicycles and walkers on this thing, sidewalk?
That's why it's 10 feet. These typically come with some line striping and some signs spaced every once in a while to remind folks to share the path.
Will you share this with the climate committee?
Yeah.
It just wants some trees there.
See what they're, they can chime in.
I think it's a great idea. And I think, I like to bike on the rail trails. The closer we can get people to the city with signs pointing like, ooh, that way.
Yeah.
It's great because it's nice to.
What do we do, what do we do over the driveways, Chip? Because concrete gets destroyed over a driveway. What's asphalt going to do on our driveway? Because it's going to really suck if every 30 feet, there's a section that's fully broken up that you can't even walk on without breaking ankles.
I'd say that's the kind of thing that, one, if, if, if we were to get the council's support to pursue this, we, we, this is when we get with the VHB and we say, what are our options? One option's going to be maybe that, like you said, everything we cross a driveway with, especially if they have a dumpster, does get destroyed. It is cheaper to replace that asphalt than it is to replace a concrete sidewalk. So it might be an even trade-off when they're done.
Well, if you're doing it every three years, it's supposed to be 30 years. Probably just about equal on the end.
Yeah.
That's a final design issue, but it's a great question.
Yeah.
I just don't want it to, I don't want it to be done. And then five years come back and people say it's unwalkable. Kind of like what we did in Taylor Park. I mean, we put in that sidewalk that was impervious. And then 10 years later, no one can walk on it.
And do you have to ask the people that live down there, or?
If we're, if we're within our right of way, we really don't have to ask them.
We are going to be talking to them anyway. Because it's a federal project, we have to go to everyone and sort of, we have to kind of get their permission. Because the feds always assume that some construction worker's boot is going to end up on the other, on the private property owner's lawn. So they do require us to get a temporary easement from anyone along any of these projects. We did it on most of our streetscape projects. So there will be a chance for us to, you know, engage in a conversation with the property owners and let them know what's going on, answer their questions, see if they have any concerns.
And we'll change the dynamic if you're, you're having a wide path on one side with no trees. For good or worse, it's going to change the dynamic a lot.
Well, there's always, we can always, if there are any property owners who are happy to have a tree on their side. We can, the city can donate trees as part of our tree planting program to go on people's lawns. It doesn't always have to be rebuilt. So that could be part of it.
Do we, would we retain ownership of that when it's ready to come down? Is that on us to take down?
That, we could work that out.
Okay.
You won't be around long.
I won't be around.
You definitely want your.
We'll just put your phone number, Chad.
Don't, don't give me permission to, you for chainsaw, Chip.
Thought you wanted trees.
10 foot would be on the.
East side.
East side.
Apparently a sidewalk down, the sidewalk goes away. This, the 10-foot path, what's the buffer between the road? Is it a painted line? Is it a curb?
This would be, there would be some greenbelt left. We'd have to assess how much. And then that section is, that whole section's raised out from the street. The, the greenbelt's like a burn. So it'll be separated from the street, plus a little higher than the street.
So it will, I thought you said that there would be no greenbelt road.
I mean, the one itself.
It's going to, the greenbelt's going to narrow. It's going to narrow. This is going to, it's, it's definitely going to feel a lot safer than if we're just on the street.
And we're okay with the plowing and stuff in the winter? Because sometimes that's hard on South Elm Street. Because if there's no greenbelt to put the snow in, so they plow. They plow it into the sidewalk. The sidewalk plow goes by, plaza back in the road. Street plow comes by, plaza back in the sidewalk. So it's just like, this is going to need snowboard.
Yeah, and also I think it's one of those things where, you know, Public Works does a quick, quick approach around the city during a storm. Sometimes there's the cleanup later on.
Okay, I'm okay with the concept.
I, I like it. I would just encourage trees where we can have them. Because someone's front lawn is now going to change, right? It's going to get, it's going to be bigger. Is that the expectation? Could you cut off at the current sidewalk?
The greenbelt's going to narrow. We're not going to go any farther onto people's actual, past the right line to their lawn.
But if you're getting rid of the sidewalk, that frees up more green space on their front lawn?
No, because we're probably going to start, we're going to start with the sidewalk. If it is up against a property and go toward the street to get that, to get that 10 feet.
To maximize your green, greenbelt?
No, minimize greenbelt. They're going to go from the edge of the sidewalk on the property owner's side.
You're going to try to maximize the greenbelt between the path and the road. Yeah, but there's not going to be much. It'll be your regular street greenbelt that you use to have.
Yeah, we got rid of it. But that was good for us. It was a pain in the butt to maintain.
Anyone in the audience like to share any comments? Mary?
I'll simply share, David Hutchinson, Bearfield Street. That, well, first off, I was in here a few months ago advocating for exactly this. So thank you very much for the thinking about redesigning and.
You'll find us to be very responsive.
We'll see. In any event, a few weeks ago, a couple of weeks ago, there was an event that celebrated the opening of the rail trail, the New Lowell Valley Rail Trail. And Walkin White St. Albans with Local Motion had a tent there. And I can't tell you how many people came and stopped by on bikes to park their cars downtown and said, can you tell us, can you direct us how to get onto the rail trail from here? A safe way, so we don't have to bike on Route 7. We know there's a, we know there's a bike path on Route 7. We really don't want to be there. So we had to kind of tell them to go up to High Street and then maybe go down to 105, onto the trail. This is such a no-brainer in terms of economic development for the downtown, we think. That for people to be able, from out of town, be able to park their cars here, get on their bikes, ride out, come back into town, have lunch, shop, whatever. We think it's great. Not to mention the kids at the school. So we ask for your support.
Mary, did you want to comment?
Aye.
Hi. I haven't done my homework on this, so I apologize. But I, I wanted to second the impulse here for trees. And I understand that, you know, measurements are measurements, but think about summers that are 10 or 20 degrees hotter. And wouldn't it be lovely to have some shade as you're biking along all that urban-built heat island effect? Trees also just make it, not just physically comfortable, but you, people, local people who might need a little nudge to walk as opposed to drive their cars, will do it if it's pleasant. You know, if it's, if it's a pretty, it's a pretty walk, if it's a pleasant walk. And I wanted to just, not that I have to remind you, you guys know this stuff, but we're going to have all those new folks living at the Fonda site, and they may want to walk into town. So there could be a lot of pedestrians here, not just bikes. And if, if there's any way to make it really nice, not just physically possible, but nice, I think it would get tremendous use. It would really change the character of the street, too, instead of it just being like a bunch of asphalt and a bunch of buildings. It would be like a cool part of downtown. So I just, I don't know what the obstacles are, but it's worth a little extra push or two to see if we can't figure that out. Thank you.
Thanks, Erin. So just two quick questions, Chip. How does the public get involved? Because we don't usually get involved with the nitty-gritty about where the line striping is, where the tree's planted. We don't get, how would the public have input into that design element?
Um, on a project like this, that's more, typically not, not a lot. We'd need to do the city council.
Okay.
Or the other committees that look at the plan.
Okay.
And we could always do a design update for you folks to get, to do a check-in later on if you want. We'd get into that nitty-gritty.
That may be good. And this isn't impacting the timeframe when we're starting this project, right? The road bits and all the other parts? This isn't going to take like a whole additional year to get approved or anything?
Um, no.
Okay.
But there's, there's still, the right-of-way phase that we have to go through for the feds, it does take a while for any project, regardless of the fact that we've taken a little time to add this in.
Okay.
It's, it's not going to delay things much more than it already would have been delayed.
Okay.
It's not part of Federal Street project, is it?
Okay, that's what I'm wondering. Yeah.
It is separate?
Separate.
Okay. So we can start the, the street portion and wait on this to come by, come into proportion?
This will probably happen sooner.
This will happen sooner for the Federal Street project.
Okay.
If there's any way you can make it appealing to the eye, I think that would be great.
Yeah.
Take a little bit of what we have going on on Main Street, but down there on that path.
Right.
You don't want people to feel like they're coming to the end of like-
Yeah, the tie, the tie is important.
Yeah, tying it all into the feel of downtown, I think would be-
Yeah, with a more of a neighborhood type-
Right.
-deal, though.
It would be nice if it wasn't black asphalt, if it were beige asphalt.
Well, I was just going to ask, we have an asphalt color swatch, it's a color swatch kit we can bring up to the next meeting.
That, I think that would be a huge-
Blue, this thing, there's, fuck it up.
I don't want gray.
Blowing.
Black is hot. Black is, yes. Yeah.
But beige would look nice, because almost like a dirt path, has a whole stick of paint centers.
I didn't know you were, oh, yeah, I didn't know you could color that stuff. We'll see what we can pick.
Okay.
You can do it, Chip.
I, I can go over there, a couple cans of spray things.
On the agenda, we have, uh-
Anything else?
A discussion on the vote? Vote? That, sorry about that.
Zach Scheffler, 60 Lake Street. My brother just got a house that's right on the rail trail. And I walk and bike Federal Street all the time because of that, but even before, it's a thoroughfare for cars, folks walk in, Trudy mentioned kids. And I just wanted to put in a plug for the multi-use pathway because of the senior housing and condominiums that's also on that route, and the truck traffic from the DFA plant. Having the wider multi-use pathway is just more safe with a lot of industrial traffic going on, the car thoroughfare. And also really gives folks in the senior housing space to comfortably move from one end of the street to the other. There's a gentleman, the Bethel Shiva Senior Housing Unit, I believe he has one, but both of his legs are missing and navigating that sidewalk, and its current condition is really tough. And when you throw in expected bike traffic from the rail trail, you throw in kids from school, they're back. And even, you know, just going to the, a walk in their shoes event that happened this past weekend, every single agency who serves folks in that area talk about how important walkability is for everyone that's coming through their doors, whether it's Spectrum or the food shelf or anything. So you have all those different types of folks navigating that sidewalk, and it's just the multi-use aspect of it. And the plan is like, I think, really critical to making it work for everyone who's going to be using that. Seeing this plan, I'd be really excited. So all your work and effort to make this happen just is really exciting to me, not only as someone who bikes and walks that way, but passing other folks on the way who are doing the same thing and hearing their stories from Trudy and from David and others. It's a really cool project, and the economic viability of it, the economic increase, combined with just the humanity that it'd be showing some of the residents who live in the area is a, that's a one-two combo and deeply cool. So thank you all for your work doing this. Just wanted to share.
For the record, you went over your time, but because you had the Springsteen sweatshirt on, you later.
Some of us were born to run. Some of us are born to walk, and some of us are born to bike.
Good, thank you. I wasn't going to say anything, but that inspired me. I get, and also I had a conversation with Connie Ward for this weekend about Main Street traffic. Is, this is a great idea. I mean, it's really exciting to think about the rail trail being connected up. The discussions we've had about the Fonda site, we have trees, we've added trees into that, so lots of trees. But living, looking out over the Fonda site and thinking about, that's the area I live in, is to, for us to think about this project in congruent with the rest of the area. Because the thing is, Main Street, I mean, we would ask that there be a speed limit of 12 miles an hour. I mean, it's like, the traffic is incredible. Traffic has, I think people are driving 15, 60 miles an hour at 5:00 in the morning. And so, I mean, if we're going to be encouraging this link to the rail trail, is to think about the area in general.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mitch, Amy?
Only a couple people left.
I did get an email from Kevin Durth also about the 10-foot, the 10-foot multi-use.
Nope. Mitch Crave, 80 High Street. I can't tell you how pleased I am to hear about this multi-use pathway being seriously considered. I'm thinking of it selfishly as the walk-bike person for St. Albans City School and the kids that go back and forth there. I also walk that back and forth every single day on that route. It's a long time coming, and I'm just, I hope that you guys can support this. It just seems like a win in all kinds of ways.
So Chip, this plan doesn't show the sidewalk going down all the street. We're keeping that, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we connect to it.
Okay, it's not on yours.
This, this, this project also adds at least one crosswalk on Federal Street, it's called maybe two, which is something that we also need on that block.
Will you, well, do we have a lot of like bike racks around the city for people to be able to walk up their bikes if they're shopping or they're eating?
We've installed some as we do the streetscape projects here and there where there's room.
Parked.
See, there's a tire park.
Okay. Right.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Amy Brewer. I'm a health educator up at Northwestern Medical Center. As many folks know, I don't live in the community, but I've worked with walk-bikes in Albans, Safe Race to School, and I'll be living in our community for a long time. I don't have anything to add that people haven't already said. People have said it up so beautifully, how well it serves so many different people and so many different needs, ties into climate change, allowing people to walk and move themselves, park their cars. And I had also said to you all, any known letter on behalf of Walk-Bikes St. Albans? Does anyone have anything more to add? I just have my phone number, you're late to ask. Thank you very much for considering this.
Did you, going off agenda, did you want to plug your cigarette pickup?
Sure. We'll be doing some cigarette public cleanups downtown St. Albans, the industrial park, coming up in the month of August.
In the patch, have I picked up as many as?
Uh, I think we picked up in, out of nine cleanups, 47,000 butts last year. The number isn't as important as getting people out, picking up butts, talking about them as litter, as pollutants, and encouraging people to quit. Chad has been phenomenal picking up in the past, in a while.
It's not a while, I'm sorry.
But not to put you on the spot.
I don't work in the city anymore, so.
I, I would say that the number is, should be an incentive based on 47,000, that's-
It's an intense, it's, it's, it is the world, world's number-one litter item. It is not an insignificant problem. I, I downplay the number because it is not my goal that we will, I do not believe will ever, in our efforts, just decrease, you know, by a significant amount. Perhaps I'm not being positive enough. But I encourage you all to kind of join, and one of them, it's very eye-opening, you have great conversations with people, and we encourage people who aren't yet ready to quit just to, to put their butts, dispose them in a different way that doesn't harm the community or the walkways. But we'd like to walk. We like to walk all the way there. Diet back.
One button. I asked this question all the time, I don't know the answer. Do our cars made with an ashtray anymore? I don't think so, right?
I think it's an option.
It is an option.
It's, it's an option, I think.
Or a lighter.
Yeah, for a lighter, yeah.
If you pop in for anybody.
Amy, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for that info.
So I move that we approve the Federal Street sidewalk plans, conceptual sidewalk plans.
Second?
Any further comments, questions? Carrying on all over the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Opposition, motion passes. Chip, we'll have you back to discuss interim zoning. Number 11 on the agenda. Thank you all for coming in.
Thanks.
This year, and my killer bill was passed, number S-100, signed by the governor last, we can go Monday, or we can go from today. That bill includes a number of preemptions of local zoning with the goal of allowing more housing to be built. And it changes the law that enables and controls the ability to do local zoning. So typically, when that law changes, you, it supersedes your local rules, and you need to follow whatever's in that law, which is called Chapter 117, regardless of what's in your zoning. So typically, what happens is there is a time limit to adjust your zoning to, to the amendments to the law. And for much of S-100, that's true. There, there are many of the changes don't take effect until December of 2024, and we have plenty of time for the planning commission to consider them and bringing our zoning into compliance and bringing that before the city council, following the normal process. Whether or not we agree that it's all the best idea, it was adopted, you, it's, the law's passed, and it's now the law of the land. There were a couple pretty powerful preemptions, though, that were given an effective date of July 1st of this year. And they kind of short-circuit things in terms of what, what they would allow versus what our zoning says. And so what we've done is we've proposed interim zoning, which is an emergency measure that a local legislative body can take to quickly put something into place to just provide some direction in a situation while the municipality is pursuing what the permanent rules might be. And we're in that, we're pretty much in that situation now, so that's our suggestion. There are two changes that take effect from S-100 that we need to deal with. One is that we now need to allow a duplex, specifically, and by duplex, they mean a two-unit in the same building. We need to allow that anywhere where we allow a single-family dwelling with the same standards that would require a single-family dwelling. But the law says allow, it doesn't say we have to permit it by just going into SARA and getting a permit. So we're suggesting in the interim zoning that we require conditional use review for these duplexes. They have to come before the DRB. And we sort of stipulate that. You can do this, but you have to come before the DRB. And in the city, any duplex requires conditional use review before the DRB anyway. But the provision in, in the interim zoning proposed pretty much matches what S-100 says, is that the setbacks, the densities, the lot areas, the lot widths, that you consider for these duplexes will be the same for what a single-family home is subject to in that zoning district. Now, the real, the real big change is that S-100 also says that any developments that would result in a structure with three to four units in it must be a permitted use, which would mean that you can just go into the permitting office and go to SARA and say, all right, I meet all the requirements of the rules, give me my permit. In the city, except for the central business district, there's no way you can build a three-to-four-unit building without doing conditional use review before the DRB. But S-100 has now made a change that says that a municipality has to allow someone to do it as a permitted use. The problem is that right now, our density rules for these types of structures is, is 5,000 square feet of lot area per dwelling unit. And that's worked pretty well for us because the applicant has to come before the DRB and have a conversation about character of the area, some, you know, may, to some, to some extent, character of the area, but other considerations. The neighbors all get mailings, you know, that's the process we're used to. So the suggestion that the interim zoning proposal makes tonight is that, you know, we'll allow these developments to be permitted as now required by law. But if you want to do it through the permitted avenue, then the density for each unit, or the lot area required for each unit, will be the same that we require for a single-family home in that zoning district, which is always more than only 5,000 square feet per dwelling unit. So the rule is that, as it lays out in the second page, it lays out the zoning districts and the square feet that would be required for dwelling unit. And it's the same amount of square feet that we require for a single-family home. And when I say square feet, it's not the square feet of the living space, it's the square feet of the lot area on the property that's required as you want to add the dwelling units to the lot. And that's the proposed interim zoning. This can be in effect for two years while the planning commission gets to work on making suggestions for the permanent changes to the zoning that will bring us into the compliance with the new state law.
Chip, if, what if we, what if we raised our requirements for SFRs? Everything else we would consider that's here today is permitted or pre-existing from this day on. If you want an SFR in St. Albans City, it's now going to be this. And we, we make that in such a way that it does what we want it to do. Can we do that?
We can.
We can? Did you say can or can't?
We, we probably, we, we could with this interim- We, we probably, we, we could with this interim, we could at any time if we amend our zoning. We could with this interim zoning, but I, the, the city council could also just choose to raise the required square footage for the three-to-four unit structures rather than doing it for all single-family homes. I just, I just chose that, I just chose that maybe.
Don't you think that's more challengeable than saying, okay, we're, because they're going to say, look, you're still singling out these dwellings. But if we say no, now it's across the board for all SFRs starting on this date. That's, that's what it is. I don't know. I'm sure that, now, did you?
I think it's a stretch. I'll tell you, because the, the purpose of interim zoning is when you're presented with a particular situation and you think you need to quickly pass a rule to deal with that, well, you come up with a permanent rule that follows the regular process with all the hearings. Since they didn't make any changes to how we're supposed to regulate single-family homes, I think it might be a stretch to say we're also making a change across the board for single-family homes with this change.
So do that in permanent, perhaps, but not in interim?
Did, how long did you say we can stay in interim zoning?
Two years. And actually, we can extend it. But we have about two years until December 2024 anyway.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but if, if we're interim zoning, doesn't the council become the zoning?
Only, only for uses that you allow that aren't already allowed in your zoning. And that's not the case.
Say that again.
So if you, if you say, so if you pass interim zoning that allows something, a new use that's not, that's not allowed anywhere else in the city, hasn't been allowed under regular zoning, then that has to be considered by the city council by a conditional use review. I mean, this interim zoning isn't about allowing any new use that's not already allowed. It's just about adjusting densities. So this, this, and the way it's written, it can still be considered by the DRB or by SARA, but it gives these density rules that have to be followed.
And what, what did S-100 do regarding parking?
S-100 is going to reduce our ability to require parking. But that rule doesn't take effect until December 2024. So until then, when, with this interim zoning and with our regular zoning, we'll be able to continue to follow our parking rules unless we choose to change them sooner than December 2024.
So are there any, so this really impacts cities where there's, where there's wastewater, water, right? I mean, this doesn't really impact.
You have to have the water wastewater.
Yeah, this doesn't impact, this is saying to towns that have, that have ten-acre requirements to build a house. This isn't putting any additional, additional pressure on them, is it? Is anywhere in this law say, okay, the ten acres?
I think it has to be hooked up to city, like sewer water, so you're still.
This looks, this looks very, S-100 looks very focused on urban centers.
Yeah. The duplex rule applies across the state. The three-to-four dwelling unit permit by right thing.
But the duplex law really doesn't apply throughout the state.
No, 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 it does, it does, it does. That's, that's not what.
If your septic can't handle it.
Yeah, 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 you're right. You still have to get your, you're still subject to your septic capacity.
Yeah.
But there are a lot of places in the state that have the capacity and they're going to have to allow a duplex there now. The, the three-to-four unit thing is for areas in the state that have water and sewer, like us. And a lot, most of the other stuff in S-100 is for water and sewer areas. But parking is, and there's one, there's a new density rule that it, that might not be only moving, but we'll get into that when we start planning for December, two years.
You think this is the best way to preserve our neighborhoods? In the short term, right? So, so someone doesn't come in and decide to like pop up a big multifamily?
Because right now, if we did nothing.
House in the backyard.
If we, if we didn't pass this, someone would be able to come in after July first, come in and say to SARA, I want, I want my permitted by right, three-to-four unit building. And the density you require for them is only five thousand square feet of lot area per unit, so. And SARA wouldn't really be able to go against that. But this interim zoning slips in and says, hold on. If you want to do this permitted, permitted, then you got to do the ninety-five hundred square feet or seventy-five hundred square feet per unit. If you want to do the old way, the, the regular way through conditional use, then yeah, you can, you can propose it at the five thousand square feet per unit if you want. That's the way we've always done it. So it actually allows you to do both. If you want to be denser than what this allows, then you can just do your regular conditional use review application.
What determines if it's ninety-five or seventy-five?
I just went through for each zone and the number that is required for single-family homes in that zone.
So does it track what we used to call low and high density?
Yep. So the R, the residential ninety-five hundred district, it's ninety-five hundred square feet. And the business neighborhood transition as well. And actually, all the other zones in the, in, in the, in the city are seventy-five hundred per single-family home. And so that's the way it's laid out, the interim zoning as well.
Did this pass over, like, by law, from up there?
Yeah, it was the, this was the big freight train of the session. We tried as hard as we could to influence things like this. We actually got a couple of changes, but we wanted more.
This is how they're handling the housing crisis. This is what they're going to say.
Most of them, Major's Field or Fairfax and places like that, that don't happen.
Yes.
I said over and over again that you realize that when you rezone water and sewer areas, you are rezoning my entire community. They, I think they kind of wanted to be able to say, we just rezoned entire communities. I think that's what they wanted to do. And that's what they did.
When you say we push back, is it just us or is it us and Berry and Montpelier and Burlington? So I know South Burlington pushed back, but was there other communities, the?
You heard a lot from, we were very active, South Burlington was very active, Montpelier a little bit. Some others, some others were brought in, I think, requested by their legislators just so they could hear from them. But then, and then it was really the Vermont Dega Cities and Towns and the Vermont Planners Association. Planners Association was really, you know, that, their main comment was that Montpelier's not where this planning should be occurring. You, you come up with goals for communities to meet and you let them decide what their zoning is to say. That's the way we prefer it. But Montpelier wanted to rezone us. And then, yeah, it's always surprising how little you, you get other communities coming in to testify in issues like this. Normally, they just kind of fall behind BLCT.
Well, let's see. Why do we not like this? We don't like it because parking, for one thing. There's going to be a lot of street parking. There's going to be a lot of green space parking. And we don't like it because our single-family infrastructure is going to get a large, our large single-family infrastructure is going to get demolished.
Chopped up.
And so the tools we have, we have our conditional use tool, right? Character of the area affected.
Although we were limited in our ability to use that for anything up to four units anyway. But if I can just kind of take a segue that you're setting up, I would say that one of the things we're probably going to be considering for December of 2024 is that we take a lot of what's in character of the area, the way things should look and the way they should, they should be set up, and we put them in as actual standards, like designed, maybe more design standards for neighborhoods.
And that's a great idea.
And that's not character of the area. That's a design standard that anyone, and whether it's permitted or whether it goes before the DRB. We did that with our prominent front entrance rule, and we can do that with other things as well. And, and I think we are also going to find that, that, that front entrance rule is actually a pretty powerful tool that, that we can use to, to, to just make just about any new house in the city look like a nice house, regardless of what's in S-100. We, we have some really good tools right now to make sure that this new development looks, continues to meet the standards we're, we're used to and that we expect of our neighborhoods. I think there are a couple more things we might need to put in, like where fire escapes should go. I think that's one thing we'll have to put in there. But the, the, the other thing I'm going to look at is the state may limit the number of parking spaces that we can require in a couple of years. But how do we define what parking is? How do we define what parking should look like? How do we define what, there might be a way for us to still require adequate parking space for what we think households use in our city while still complying with how many parking spaces the state is allowing us to require, so.
What about no parking this side of the street or something? A lot more of that going on. That hurts us too, but it could help us alleviate this problem by doing that a little more. Could it? Would it?
I think most, parking on one side of the street? I think most streets we allow parking on one side of the street.
Or no parking on the street.
Well, and what about plowing? I mean.
Absolutely.
I mean, if you, if you have all these big apartment buildings with not enough parking, people are parking on the sidewalks, and how are the guys going to?
I don't think we're going to give up on the winter parking ban.
We're going to park railroads instead.
Yeah, we're going to, shared use paths are a great place to park.
Maybe in the winter you're allowed parking.
Maybe a more toward my allocations.
So what you're going to, what, what?
duplex requires more allocation than a single-family home.
So what we're going to find out, what's going to end up happening is in the summer, they're going to park in the, in the street.
Yep.
And in the winter, they're going to park on the greenbelt or in their front lawn. That's what's going to happen.
We can also start being a little more upfront with, with folks in the city, with landlords, with people who are moving to the city. We've kind of already missed the boat because we didn't know COVID was going to bring a bunch of new people to the city. But we, we can probably make sure that folks understand this more when they move here, that find out how much parking's at your apartment. Understand in the city, you shouldn't be parking on the grass or, and that there's a winter parking ban. You're going to have to move your car so that when you come here, you're aware of, you know, the situation you're moving into. The, the story that we, the sad part of it, the story that we were telling in Montpelier and our vice chair, Carl, Carl Watkins from the planning commission was telling is that the whole point of the housing crisis is that we have households that don't have much choice over what housing they can move into. We have a lot of households that are forced to move into units where that there is not enough parking for how many cars they have. So Montpelier should allow us to right-size the requirements. And they, they didn't listen to that, apparently.
Tim, you're sitting on a fortune because you probably got, what, six units lost behind your house? Do you start renting those out?
I'm going to build on the back and put five or six more units up. Be another little hotel up there, I guess.
Remember, we are going to license landlords, so.
So that's the other thing. That's, that's the other thing that might come out of this is we might find that we need to get landlords on board.
And, you know, I mean, I, I think a lot of this will affect, you, you can densify depending on your design choices and your building materials choices. And a lot of it, we can design our way through it. And just because you might have a right, the lot might have a right to be developed in that manner, doesn't mean that we're going to give you a license to be able to develop it for some of your best behavior.
Part of that license could be requiring that when you advertise a unit in the city, you're very clear in how many parking spaces are available with each unit.
So Dom has lead the city and town done with this?
Yeah, I mean, the league fought a good fight. And you can see this time and time again in legislature, right? And every year, there's one, there's usually one freight train, right? And this was it this year, so.
I, I think we still have a conversation about pushing back in some form or fashion.
I think the best with, some of the things we've just been talking about tonight, you know, honestly, there's not a lot of communities that are, that are doing this, you know. There's not a lot of, you know, there isn't anybody, I think, that's trying to use their unique charter authority to review who can operate rented properties in the community.
Does that require a charter change?
Not to ours.
Chip, my suggestion was, I, I think Trudy's on board, Marie, I don't know about Tim and Chad, but within the next month, let's do a tour. My, my thing is more visual. We hit one or two houses in every ward. You tell us what that could look like when we're all said and done, based on if we were to do nothing. So my house, which has an initial lot, Tim's house, whoever, let's do a walking tour. You tell us. You, you pick them out, pick them out ahead of time. Look at them and tell us what, what the impact could be. That would, that would go a long ways with me. I, I understand there's going to be impact, but I like to, I would like to visualize it on top of that.
Feel true.
Right. The recommendation is, is because July first is coming, that.
No, I get you. You're looking for.
Yeah, right, right.
I'm, I'm saying in addition to that, so, yeah, so we.
And I think we're going to be doing a lot of that as we move toward when the rest of S-100 is going to start taking effect as well. And we have the city, we're going to be also be able to back up what we want to do in the city plan because the city plan is also going to be read adopted at the same time.
Yeah, no, I mean, if we do that walk, I'd say invite the planning commission or VRB.
Yeah.
So yes, you have Chad or a chat? Chip's looking for us to adopt interim zoning as we discussed on the two pieces. Approving the group interim zoning, read the housing density for three and four unit buildings.
Second.
We have a motion of second to adopt the interim zoning. Any other questions or comments? Hearing done, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Chip.
Thank you.
Nice to talk to you.
Introduce it.
All right, so we'll move on to item number twelve, which is consider appointments to the BEI committee. We had initially four applicants for two spots. We had an interview committee of three of the councillors, interviewed four applicants. And Chad, if you want to share the?
Yep. So Trudy, myself, and Bob interviewed the four applicants for the two open seats on the BEI. And we had great, we had great interviews with all the candidates. We asked the same questions to all four candidates. And when it all came down to it, I had been bereaded enough about going over the seven first time that I have learned my lesson and I will refuse while I'm on council to approve anyone over the seven. So we had two open seats and we, we made the recommendations to approve Melissa for one, Carl for the other. And if you have eight, if you, if you, and also if you were to have eight, you would need five at that point to be a quorum. Is that correct, Chip? Whereas if you have seven, you only need four.
Correct.
There was a meeting that I tried to go to, I want to say three months ago, but it may have been four months now. And I came to City Hall to attend that BEI committee and apparently it had been canceled due to not being able to have a quorum. So to solve that, we had more as a, as a, as a alternate. So that would, if someone was unable to attend, they would still be able to meet the four quota. Do you have anything to add, Trudy?
No, I think we just, we enjoyed our time with all the candidates and felt like those three folks met what we were looking for, for the committee.
So you are proposing an ultimate for the?
We are going to do more after the ultimate, yep.
All right. Any questions? Is there any comment on this, audience? On Zoom, any comments? Hearing done. We have a motion on the floor with a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing done, motion passes. Thank you for your work on that. Chad, Trudy, and Bob, who's not here tonight, so.
Dom, is Reese going to reach out to Melissa, Carl, and Carl and Ron?
I'll, I'll let them know.
Okay. They all already know? Okay.
I, I'll let them know and.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I think they have a meeting tomorrow night.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to item number thirteen. Sarah, do you want to join us? Consider, consider adoption, water, wastewater, stemwater, fountains.
I'd be happy to. Good evening.
You seem to be in better shape than the last time we saw you.
I'm in much better shape than last time, I have to say. I had no idea how much a concussion would take out of me.
I thought you were going to say I had no idea when I first had that.
That's why there's video, thankfully. But I did make everyone come back and reconfirming promises I made the following week.
Thank you for joining us.
So I am here this evening, after a meeting earlier this week with the finance committee, to talk about the FY 2024 Water Sewer and Stormwater Enterprise Fund budgets. These are the city's three enterprise funds. An enterprise fund is a business-type activity of a municipality and is designed to be self-supported by user fees, which are set at a rate sufficient to cover all operating debt and capital costs. The water and sewer are the largest of the three funds, with stormwater being the new pin on the block. Water and sewer continue their operational trajectory similar to prior years with one new position proposed in these budgets, no significant new capital projects, no new debt, bless you, and a continued commitment to reserve funds for capital projects along the way, with $100,000 in each fund toward a capital reserve termed a budget stabilization reserve in the budget, but those funds are being reserved in the financial records. The overall rate proposal is a 6% water rate increase and a 4.75% increase in the sewer fund. The drivers for these rates are personnel and chemicals. I've noted in your memo some of our commonly used chemicals in both the water funds and the sewer fund and what we're seeing year over year, with the most alarming one being a 140% increase in the cost per gallon for chlorine. You can see in this chart that we have a range from 7% increases all the way up to 140%. We're not the only municipality experiencing this. This is really across the board, and these costs are largely out of our control, and these are things that we are required to have to treat the water and the wastewater. We have pulled in a quote for some chlorine from a secondary vendor that we have some history with, and we have about a 50 cent per gallon decrease, and so we'll be pursuing that and potentially some other quotes from other vendors.
Sarah, a quick question. If we buy more, do we get it for less is one? And if, well, answer that question first.
I don't, I don't have an answer to that question. I.
I know, just wondering if we went in with other municipalities, would it be worth it? If you get 1,000 gallons, it's, we'll drop it to a dollar, but we only need 250. Maybe there's other places that need 250.
Excellent questions. Hey, Marty.
We've looked at that in the past. They have a couple companies having wanted to enter that because they know we're gonna buy. And as far as buying more for us, we only have so much capacity and the strength of it diminishes the longer it sits.
Okay, thank you.
Great question, though. Like the Costco style.
Throw out three quarters of mayonnaise anyway, too.
The other new item that I propose in these budgets is a water and sewer or a meter technician to help us get across the finish line of our water meter replacement project, which has stalled at about 50%. This position would also help interface with finance to work on the growing list of meter repairs that need to be tackled, like low battery or, you know, MXU didn't read or meter pointed backward, things that we find every month and quarter. And unfortunately, that list does not fix itself. So the proposal does include a position to help with that project.
And you perceive that being ongoing? It's not a short-term position to get past what you suggested here?
That's correct.
That individual would continue on after the fact?
I do see it as being an ongoing position. I can tell you, I experienced in the village of Essex Junction, working on a meter replacement program, and the village ended up contracting out the final meters at 100 or 150 dollars a pop. That would put us upwards of $250,000 to finish our project. So we do think that this is a a better solution for us, and it helps with some of the shorthandedness we're experiencing, you know, with the ongoing maintenance and reeating of the meters.
I think ours still needs to be done, so. Send someone short and afraid of cops.
Here, Marty. It's very cool. Once they're all done, there's this online portal and users can log. I'm sure you've all heard all about it, but I was just checking out my own usage, changing some toilet guts this weekend.
So, go ahead. I don't wanna cut you off.
Go ahead.
So if I, if my quarterly bill is 300, if I do my math correctly, I think it's simple math, I can expect to pay $330 on my next bill, based on a 10%, a combined 10% increase? Is that how I, is that how I should look at that?
Well, that's a really good question. If you flip to the next page in your packet, I have modeled out some samples for users who use 25,000 gallons a quarter versus users who use about 10,000 gallons a quarter. And for the $25,000 user, the quarterly increase is about $20 or 5%. And that's really a a result of the split between fixed rates and usage rates. So the variable rate goes up 6% on water, 4.7% on sewer, and so does the fixed rate. But then as you use more, that has a changing dollar impact, which then divides back into your denominator and gives you a percentage that's slightly different than those stayed on the front page.
So your increase is on usage, non?
It's on both. I'm proposing that we apply the percentage increase across the board.
So on any bond payment that we're, that we have?
I think you're referring to the fixed component of the usage. The water and sewer bills have two components, a flat rate billed per equivalent unit for the majority of residential properties. That's one equivalent unit that starts to change when you get to the commercial and industrial sectors, and then a variable fee, which is based off of your actual usage. And the idea here is that there are quite a few costs in both the water and sewer funds that we are on the hook for, even if everyone were to turn off their caps and not flush their toilets. That includes bond costs, you know, chemicals, infrastructure, those sorts of things. So yes, I think to answer your question, yes, on both the flat fee and the variable fees. I'd be happy to take other questions on water and sewer. Can touch on stormwater very quickly as well?
Sarah, just review for us, would the budget stabilization of $100,000 for the water and $100,000 for sewer?
I would be happy to. So many years ago, the city decided that it would be a good idea to start checking away funds for reserves for various purposes, mostly capital. This comes in the form of a line item in these budget proposals called budget stabilization reserve, which is a flat $100,000. The flat $100,000 goes into the calculation of the rate, and then it effectively falls to the bottom line as a reserve at the end of fiscal year. This is in addition to the fact that we are reserving most of the allocation fees that we receive in these funds, also for capital projects. And we had some discussion at finance committee earlier this week about the naming of the account, that this is being set aside for capital purposes. Is that what you were after, Tim?
Yes.
Please feel free to elaborate.
Yeah. So that was one of the questions that we had, and originally set it up, it was for a reserve fund, which had $100,000 per year for capital projects that they needed to do. Some of them are coming through or come to. And the other was, we always went into these budget meetings with an eye towards keeping the fixed cost rate down and the usage rate high, so that people on fixed incomes who were low usage users would not have to bear the same rate as a household that had high usage. But given the circumstances that was presented to us, the committee by staff was at cost or have gone, have decreased so much this year that the fixed rate had to suffer as well, which is why the percentage went both variable rate and. And we anticipated that annually coming in the past, obviously, we knew that this type of cost would come up. And we, I think Trudy asked, Sarah at the meeting was, where are we compared to the state?
Absolutely. So we fall, when I have looked at comparable rates, usually in the Chittenden County area with water and sewer systems, we do fall above the midpoint, but we are not the highest. We also have a unique situation where we make our own water, as opposed to purchasing it from a larger water distributor such as Shankland Water District. And so we have additional infrastructure costs that are associated with the two water plants that we have, as opposed to a number of communities who rely solely on the Shankland Water District to purchase their water wholesale.
A lot of periods, the last five or six years, a lot of periods.
And Trudy asked, sorry, you probably have to ask yourself or say it yourself. But you made some budget changes to to save us some money as far as investing.
Oh, yeah, like how can we make money on some of our money?
Well, I was very excited that you had mentioned that. A couple of months ago, Nicole and I worked with the bank to change the interest rates on our cash account and our money market accounts, and we took the cash account from 0.05% a year to in the two percentage point range, and the money market account from 0.35 to 3.9, which is closer to the short-term T-bill. And we went from averaging $400 a month in interest earnings on our cash to 6,400 last month. So whenever I'm feeling down, I like to look at that little chart and I'm excited.
Did you get discount?
No. She was on it before I.
But is that type of forward thinking?
Yeah. We have some money in the reserves. Absolutely.
So we're blocking away, so that's $6,000 a month that you said we're getting?
Yep, that we pulled in last month. Now, last month was a tax collection month, so our cash balances were on average higher. But that is about a $70,000.
I was gonna say 70 grand, that's almost $100,000 a year. 70%.
And that's not just in the water sewer funds, it's across all funds, but a rising tide and all that.
Yeah.
It's nice that rates are getting better.
It's nice to have some cash to invest when rates are getting better.
So the finance committee approved moving forward with the budget to break it to the full council.
But we don't have a vote on this one. We only have a discussion.
I saw that.
Do I need to be appointed to the finance committee, or do I just take my spot?
Just take your spot.
Great. You did a great job.
I maybe have missed it, Sarah, but what is the balance of our reserve?
So as of the, as of June 30th of 2022, the undesigned net position of the water account was about $140,000. Much of that reserve has been used for projects over the last few years, and then the sewer fund was upwards of $1.9 million. And so some of that is going to be tapped for the upgrade to the trickling filter and the upgrade to the controls on the centrifuge, as noted in these budgets. Other questions?
And Marty, manhole covers, they're all in pretty good shape. I know at one point we had a whole bunch of them that we're gonna need replacement.
Yeah.
A long time ago.
We replaced a few. Our, our big thing on the water side is valves.
I was gonna say valves. How many more do you think we need to, do we need to add them or just replace them?
Both. We'll never, we'll never.
What's our goal, like five or six a year or?
If we could do five or six a year, that'd be great. We typically are trying to be proactive, but most of the time it's reactive and have to do an insertion valve or something, which is 15 to 20 grand. Depending on the size of the line.
With the new position, that should free up some, some of the public works to to do other things.
Are they, are they having to fix meters now also? Yeah, I would certainly defer to Marty to answer this question as well.
So we had a part-time gentleman that was doing, and it's not so much meters as MXU's installs, which is the electronic device that allows you to read the meter. And he worked through about the last year and a half and then wanted this summer off. So our guys have been doing it when they have time, but typically what was happening was he was going out, and when he was in the neighborhood, he would do door hangers. Those people would call Chris, didn't set up an appointment, we would send him in on his days on. He was a firefighter down at the airport in Burlington, so we had a two-day on, four-days off type of shift, so we're able to capitalize on that. With him gone, it's our guys going in as they can.
One more thing, could you comment on the stormwater? I forgot, I cut you off there when I was telling you that we had approved the budget, but I won't talk about stormwater. And then if someone could just let us know, probably Chip, if we're we're in line for a direct hit from somebody on doing some more of stormwater stuff, that's gonna cost us a lot of money in the future.
Absolutely.
The next couple of years. I'll let you stop first.
So, so probably, yeah, that seems to be the trend with stormwater.
You go first, please.
So I'm going to start with water and wastewater, because those are the larger dollar funds. The stormwater budget is trucking right along is what I wanted to say. I almost stopped myself. I probably should have. The primary change this year is that a couple of years ago, in the general fund budget, we allocated a small portion of some administrative salaries to the stormwater budget for billing and collecting the stormwater fees. That has just made its way to the stormwater budget this year, so that's a change of about $57,000, and that is really the driver in rate changes in stormwater in this budget. So the stormwater rate is a proposed increase of $4 a quarter for your user with one ERU. Chip and I discussed the large, the Nathan Street, the St. Albans State Highway and Nathan Street project that was listed in the budget last year to be funded with a combination of debt proceeds and federal grants. That has been delayed. We decided to continue to keep that in the budget, since we think it's coming down the pipeline, and Chip, I'm sure you have more to say about that. But because it is funded by sources other than user fees, including it again in this year's budget, does not have an impact on the rates. Your turn.
Yeah, the idea is that any of these, we have some big stormwater treatment facilities that we hope to be building in the next couple of years. We have three that are in the final permitting and design phase, and we're supposed to build more under our permit. The stormwater budget for the past three years has been ready for any one of these projects, if it was ready early, that it has some grant money programmed into it, and then debt, revenues from debt as well, from passing a bond, which is likely what we'd have to do for the stormwater treatment facilities. And then the utility would be paying the debt service in the subsequent years for that. We will probably still be able to slowly grow the utility budget every year to service that debt without getting a huge hit. That's, that's, that's the plan anyway. Especially when I, I think we're, right now, we're gonna be able to find grants for more than 50% of the cost of these projects.
So we're not looking at something coming in from the state saying we gotta put in $1.2 million of stormwater infrastructure within the next three years to satisfy this MS4 requirement or something like that?
You know, that's.
It's already here.
Yeah, that's, we've been looking at a price tag in the millions for these projects, and we've been planning them as we can, but there's a lot of state and federal funds that we can tap into before we have to consider bringing a bond before the voters first for the rest.
And that's the way we would do it? We wouldn't do it like, wouldn't we decide we'd start putting $100,000 per fund away? We should come up with the same type of concept for the stormwater as we do those other two?
We have been, we have been programming some, we have been programming some capital reserves into the budget, haven't we, every year? Not $100,000.
Not $100,000.
I just threw that out as.
Too big, you know, so the strategy has been to slowly ramp up the capacity within the stormwater program to be able to ultimately service the debt. But we're not there yet, you know?
Well, we're, we're charging the rate payers $4, right, per quarter?
Four.
Four.
Yeah.
Fifteen.
Seventeen, sixteen.
Is that gonna do it?
That's gonna fund this budget?
Yeah, but is that gonna, is that gonna do it, Chip? We need to be looking at.
The stormwater.
The stormwater utility budget is going to have to grow every year. It's not gonna do it this year, but we're gonna get it there over time.
The income needs to grow.
The revenues we raise with the utility are gonna have to go up every year.
From the rate payers, right?
From the rate payers.
We don't have enough information yet, right, to chart that course, right? So right, right now, we've just been trying to ramp it up kind of to the, about as much as we think it can bear, right? But do it over enough number of years, right? And then, you know, eventually, in a year or two, we're five years into this thing, you know, we can begin to convert some of that reserve to actual servicing of debt on a real project. But until then, where the projects are in design and we don't have enough information to model it.
Is your, and we'll get into this in a minute, but is your long-term intent to utilize some of the treasurer's money or something where it comes down to like for stormwater?
No, because it's all, it's not grants, it's all loans.
I get it, but it's a 1%, right?
Yeah, yeah. Water and sewer money is, is the easiest money to find. You know, how many times went in the federal ARPA and other reinvestment programs did we hear infrastructure, 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 underground, underground, right? And, you know, it's a really good example of how honestly the state could respond to some other policy priorities. But, you know, we can, you can realize that you need to do a $15 million upgrade on your wastewater plant. You can go out and get the engineers going to design it and you're 250,000 into it without paying a dime, just to get the plans ready to propose to the voters. And then you propose that to the voters and if the voters approve it, you still don't have to pay a dime until how many months after it's built, 12 months, sometimes more? And then you, oh, when you finally do have to start paying, so now you're like five years into realizing that you needed to do that upgrade, you can borrow at a rate that's typically less than inflation. So.
So when you say you engage the engineer and you don't have to pay, who's paying that? Is that, you're saying is that grand dollars or that?
It's, it's, yeah, it's the SRF programs, they're the government fund, so.
Grants.
You know, so that 250 that you're paying eventually gets locked, you know, out onto your, your 15 million back end. And they do that because there's a clear public policy interest in funding construction water and wastewater plants and there's a bunch of federal money to it that, you know, but that's, you know, that's some of the reasons we're so protective of the redevelopment fund and, you know, things like the treasurer's funds because it's so hard to get money for economic development and market rate housing and all those other things.
Okay, any more questions for Sarah or Chip? Hearing none.
Motion to rule water, wastewater, stormwater combinations.
You have a second?
I'll second.
He's going against the agenda.
No, I figured Trudy, you can immediately second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, they have comments, questions. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the opposition, hearing none, the motion passes. Sarah, thank you, Chip, thank you, great time.
You all very good.
Thank you, Sarah.
Okay, we're moving on. City manager report?
None of these reaction items, just three quick hits. Pleased to report that we're gonna be hiring some short-term temporary park supervisors in Houghton Park this summer. And this is something we've been talking about for years. And we just get a lot of input and feedback from the neighborhood that things are really taking a turn for the worse unless you have somebody down there to keep on things. So with the, what's happening with the folks that are being moved out of hotels on June, July 1st and the ongoing complaints about what's going on at the park, we just had to bite the bullet. So I think we can, we've hired two, two staff members, there's a quick little email that I put at your places. The title is park supervisor, they'll be performing light maintenance duties, but really what they're there for is to perform programmally duties. They'll have sports equipment, basketballs, tennis balls, rackets, soccer balls, et cetera, to lend out kids. They'll have a sprinkler for hot days, drinking water, supply of quiet activity supplies. And they'll also serve, as they did last year, as a federal free breakfast and lunch program. I think we can handle this out of the short-term staffing and other revenues from the recreation department. If not, we will look to backstop it, but with seven, seven-week programs, right? So, so we're pretty excited about that. We think it can have a stabilizing presence at the park and help change some of the dynamic out there.
Is it also Varlo Street or mostly Houghton?
It's mostly Houghton. Varlo has a pretty strong presence from, you know, I mean, they're.
The center's there, right?
Yeah.
So two staff, two staff members will mostly be at the park, not just one?
Well, they're gonna stagger their hours, right? They're intended to be on site from nine to seven, seven days a week. So that's a pretty big.
Let's check that little bit off. Check this little bit off.
My, my only thought about this, I, I think it's a great idea. My, my concern would be that they would, these, the, the staff would be looked at as like free childcare for people. How, how young can kids go? You know, is someone gonna drop their four-year-old off for the day, they'll get breakfast and lunch and pick them up? Like, I think, I love the idea, so don't get me wrong, but I, that is one thing I just, it would be an unfortunate position for them to be in. I mean, you, they could potentially have 20 kids show up, kind of like Spacker Mew said or said, they have a lot of kids. You get the younger population going to the park and they're in charge of giving them activities and playing with them and giving them lunch or breakfast. I, I just, I don't know if you, if, I'm sure Kelly's thought of that, like what parameters can you put in place for families?
I think the threshold is that in that 10, 11, 12, maybe eight to 12 frames. I mean, it is young, but, you know, I, I think we look at the library, we look at the pool. I think, I think history has shown that for the most part, they have been accommodated by a parent. And, and if it's Trudy's point, if the staff finds out otherwise, then we, we need to address it. But, you know, I, my, my daughter's 12, I could see 12 years going to a problem, even 10, I think we can get into seven, eight, I think that's a different story.
And we're not marketing it as a program, we're just trying to provide.
Because it's free?
It's, it's, it's not, it's not.
More supervisory.
It's trying to respond to what's already there. It's got more, you know, it's not just, it's got enforcement into it too, you know? And I, I wanted to call him Parker and he was original, right? Kind of like, like the ranger is in the state park, right? If the ranger isn't there, it gets pretty out of hand there. But if the ranger's there, he can tell you to knock it off and, but that doesn't mean that, you know, if people start dropping their kids off, we have to pivot and do something different.
Is there, is there transportation from that, from the park to the pool?
There used to be. And if there was a ground swell for that, we do that now.
I was just thinking that might be a way to get.
We did El Summer, we had one person use it once last year. That's it.
Interesting.
Yeah, yeah, so.
I can't, I can't, I can't argue that if we needed it, if we only got one person, that we used it once.
Yeah, right?
I mean, I, I think what happens a lot up at Hardak is there's a lot, there's a lot of parents and families who are going there. And I know that doesn't take everybody and this is designed, you know? We had some public input a couple of months ago that we can't leave these kids behind, we can do something for them. This is one way that we can think of to respond.
Has Kelly seen any of the kids that used to go to the pool down by, by city school?
Yeah.
At Hardak?
Yeah, lots of them.
Okay, well, that's great to hear.
Yeah, I mean, her, her perspective is, is they're making it there.
Good.
I think the interesting thing to that point is the kids who were dropped off and left at the former pool are now going to this pool with parents in hand. So I think that's a, Kelly, Kelly will share that with us. But that's a, I think that's a big positive in terms of building, building community.
Can I add?
Sure.
In my, one of my various roles, I mean, I've been working with some kids who get this criteria, I think Dominic, you're absolutely right. I don't know how that's being dropped on. They can't make it, part of going to the pool is they can't afford the $6 a day. Their parents may be working at something like Peerless where they can't, don't have the flexibility about taking kids places. I mean, they may have, and they have extremely limited income. So, I mean, the record programs that we have, they can't afford. And the Warner Home only gives you some money, it doesn't give you money for the entire summer. So I think if Dominic's proposing is great, I think if my, I mean, two is gonna be, it's gonna be a lot for two people potentially if, if it picks up. But I mean, the kids need supervision. I mean, it's like, is a group of kids that may not solve their disagreements in the way that you would like them to solve them or would they send kids to? And without adult supervision, I mean, they managed to do it when the pool was down by the city pool, I mean, that were sort of like replicating something like that. And maybe if you get them there, then they'll get to the pool and then, I mean, Tim, at one point in time, we were talking about if there were kids who couldn't afford it, about finding ways, then it becomes an issue of how do we, what do we do about kids wanting to go swimming, but can't afford to go swimming? I mean, that becomes a difficult issue.
The sprinkler idea's a good one.
The sprinkler.
We wanted a splash pad, but.
The sprinkler will do in the interim.
I just want to reinforce that. I want to reinforce that if we know an individual cannot afford, and someone has to bring the name to us, someone has to educate us who cannot or is having difficulty, we will make it work. I mean, I had an individual, a friend of my son, who we made it work, we, we got him a pass, but we need, if we don't know who they are, we can't help them. So I guess I would just spread the word.
You refer them to Houghton Park and you have supervision, then you may find out who would like more than a splash pad, who would like to be going to the pool and then, then sorting that out at that point in time.
Yeah, I agree. I, I think there's enough room to need for those two individuals to have conversation with kids. Why aren't your wife the pool of the day, can't afford it? Okay, let me see what I can do to make this happen.
They're the gatekeeper, yeah.
And it's also, I mean, staff members are a certain group of kids, as Mark was saying. And I think what you may find, if, if this all works with Houghton Park, is you have kids that you will maybe will not have to use more of this program. And they, you know, will be causing less hassles for the city PD. And, and I mean, I think at some point in time as a community, we have to take a look at the fact that our area has had the highest custody rating in the state for decades. And so, I mean, and it's, it's all linked together. And so I'm really, it stayed here, what you were gonna say, but I thought I'd say.
Thank you. So we, we have done the lunch program down there for a couple of years now, Trudy, so that's nothing new for you there. And this is one of the things that I pitched when we were talking about when we, the city pool, the Hardak was, you know, our parks here in the city are not gonna be left behind. So whether it's this one or Varlo or Taylor, not so much so, well, where the ball fields, we still care about those parks, so.
That's next month, we're working on it.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, it was one of the things we pitched, so.
I like the idea.
We're making good promises, so.
I do worry about if there's just one staff member down there. I just think that should be, I just worry about liability for if it is as rough down there as you said.
No one's, no one getting beat up. There's, there's a lot of swearing and stuff like that.
Yeah, you'll have some more of that, right?
There's also this whole thing of these girls fake fighting. They're not really fighting, they're pretending to fight, which doesn't look like that to other people. But I mean, it's like having, having somebody there with activities to do, with supervision and have. They're gonna be closer to their age than, than most. And so, I mean, it's sort of like, I mean, it's beginning.
And you, and you may find times where they're bored out of their gourd and they can go to Taylor Park and do things or.
Totally.
Yeah, great.
Okay, Dom.
Similar approach is occurring in the parking garage. Got a young man that's been there during the after-school hours. And Marty tells a great story about one of the biggest troublemakers over there who was, you know, 11 or 12-year-old kid. We put our, our guy over there and the kid interacted with us recently on something and he said, it's no fun being in the parking garage anymore.
Excellent.
So, you know, that's the good news. I, I, I think where we're headed, and we've talked about this in some social meetings, is I think we just need to find that staffing presence. The world's changed and between the lot across the street and the parking garage, we just need to have, we need to build in that presence there, so. More on that to come, but, you know, Tim put the spotlight on it one night, you know, and then the counseling and, and, you know, so look, we just need to do something here and it seems to be working. And lastly, just in closing in your packet, as I've alluded to a couple of times, State Treasurer Mike Pichak has really led the effort to take a portion of the state's investment funds and deploy those locally for development projects, primarily housing, that, where they can sort of do many of the things that we've been doing with our redevelopment model of having patient capital, investing into a project and saying, we'll take a below-market return, we just want the project to succeed and get our money back in 10 years, like the hotel for instance. And so, so Pichak has got, I think, 80 million total that they're looking to invest in projects. And so we've put a whole lot of staff time in to try to put a really compelling proposal forward and we asked them for 25 million to put into the Fonda redevelopment project. And that's, our conversations with some developers, that's about what we think it would take to complete the Fonda project that we've, the full build out of the market rate units, the re-thrusting of senior units that are spoken of. But this potentially could be the silver bullet that addresses those, those three challenges of really high interest rates and really high construction costs and a perceived lower rental market in St. Albans. I, you know, I'm not convinced that in this housing market, there's a meaningful difference between Chittenden County and St. Albans and particularly out of Franklin County maybe if not in the city for people's ability to pay for rentals. There's still perceived to be a discount there, so. But if we can make the capital available for the project, we can short-circuit that whole, that whole debate, so. So just in case you hear a press release that the city was awarded 25 million, I don't know where it came from.
You won't get a call if you beat it, Matt.
That was a nice, nice report there.
Thank you.
Any questions for Don on that? Okay, we'll move to mayor's report. Just reinforce, nice bike event for the opening of the section of Cambridge to Sheldon, the Wild Valley Railroad Trail, Andy Crossman, Josh over at the Bootleggers, the bike group here in St. Albans, 14. the bike group here in St. Albans, 14th Star. Number, number of them took, took part in it and it was a very successful event with as many as 250 bikers taken part. Smugglers and all assisted with the transportation of bikes to and from if people didn't want to bike the whole 32 miles. So that was a, and Chip, a lot of time in with, with the city hall as well. So it turned out to be a good event all the way around.
Yeah, Arlie and Marty and VW helped as well.
Chip, question for you, has Recreation Committee met to discuss the bench donations yet?
I haven't gotten a date from Kelly on that.
Can you check on that for me? I was asked about it again last week, so. I'd like to get back to them in some direction if you would. Marty, just for the board's information, council's information, the new water tank is being erected June 22nd, right?
Well, they're going to start setting panels June 22nd. So their chief operating officer will be up here from DN Tanks and they're going to bring representatives, I think, from Milton and Rotten or Williston and Rotten want to come up. They're looking at tanks as well to see this concept, so.
So when you say panels, there's a number of panels that will be interconnected and then.
There are pretty hot panels that will be poured on site. They'll erect those around the base and then put the dome on the top.
So, and that's open to this group?
Will create an invite list, yes.
Thank you. And just a shout out for Sally Boyer, first grade teacher who was taught at the city elementary school for 45 years is retiring as of Friday. I would dare bet that a good chunk of us around this table, she taught our children. So 45 years at.
Daddy.
We've always thought of you as a child, anyway, so.
She said those were our toughest theater. See, I have me, my wife and my wife's sister, one after another, so.
Oh, man.
I, I told her, I started the other day, I said, Sally, you are an absolute saint. I'm not religious, but if there's any place to go after, she's automatic.
So I will be reading a proclamation on Thursday afternoon at the student assembly, recognizing her efforts for over the years.
Long time.
Thank you to Sally for all of her efforts. And she continues to engage, she's involved with the senior center and other activities around town. Let's move on to the council reports. Tim, you used up your time at the beginning of the meeting, so we'll go to Trudy.
You mentioned the senior center. Someone noticed that it was for sale. Some of the seniors that go there noticed it's for sale, so they're a little concerned about that.
It's a decision that's been made by the senior board, senior center board. They are looking for a new home if the building were to sell.
Okay.
So.
So they will, so the seniors will still have a place to go, hopefully?
They will be there. They're, they're, they will need to find that themselves, yes. So they own the building. It's not us, they own the building.
We don't own that.
They have chosen to sell the building. What they do with those proceeds will probably be directed toward the new home.
Okay.
And I'm not sure where that new home would be.
And my one other question, we talked a while ago about parking for big events. I thought Mark, someone was going to talk to the police about that. Remember, we talked about Messenger Street is a nightmare during Maple Festival.
Tractor parade.
Tractor parade, is that? I'm just, I'm just revisiting it.
That's ongoing conversation depending on the event. And if we want to allow parking on Messenger, creating a one-way for that event on Messenger. Congress is wide enough, I think, but Congress and Bank, but Messenger and higher than that.
It was the, it was the.
Yeah.
I would, based on my experience, I would dare say that Congress isn't wide enough on, on the upper.
It's long, it's, everyone parks on the street, it's.
And it may be wide enough, Marty, but what happens is once someone gets down, then they're trying to back, back into driveways and then that backs everything else up, so. I agree with Trudy, it has to be some consistent direction of, you know, roundabout way to get people moving.
Yeah, I just didn't want to lose sight of it. And we, we have some time before the next big event, but.
That's, I mentioned it, and then when we have a big event, we have pre-meets, so.
Thank you.
Tractor parade, is that the next bit?
Yeah, yeah, probably.
It's, it's hard to get around. Like, I ordered takeout at Kaiju during the tractor parade and literally I had to walk from Food City to get it because it was snow.
That was your bad.
Yeah, that.
It was, but I was like, I want that food. But yeah, no, it's hard to get around, so.
Found herself in the parade.
Yeah.
And what did I just say? She parked down there? Let me park below the tracks.
No, there is not in the tractor parade. Okay, undone.
I thought you wanted to say something about.
Oh.
Be covered, I think.
Yeah, I talked to them about, yes, thank you.
Mary?
Just a couple of things, is there something going, I know we talked about the sewer plant. Is there something going on down there? Been a lot of odor on the northern end of town and down Newton.
No, nothing in particular, it's just the time of year, the heat, the wind, directional wind. They have a chemical that they're using to try to dampen that smell, but.
Actually, I mean, I've, I've noticed it for a long time, like back in the spring even, it was really strong and it just.
Yeah, they're unloading the sludge tanks, which has contributed to that. And they've got one almost empty. Once they get that one empty, the other one will go down, so.
All right.
Just to reinforce it, so the sludge tanks were filled during COVID, right?
During the renovation, too.
And during the renovation, so it's been sitting there. Now they're trying to clean them out, so there is a disruption and a smell for sure.
Yeah.
We have a field up there too, if you want.
What's that? I, I too had received complaints on that as well. Between me, think, not to get off subject, but there's a TV commercial with poop spray.
Poopery.
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 Can you spray that in here?
No, it's called poop.
Yeah, it's poop, right?
Poop.
Which they say uses as juice for the reduction of smell in wastewater plants.
You've made a lot of it.
It poops in the wastewater plant? I heard poopery at the house.
On a, on a large scale, they use it.
Yeah. We need to add another chemical.
Can we check on that?
I mean, it's a little late, we just did the budget.
Wow.
But can we do some homework? Because I, I get, I complain all the time.
Yeah.
People on Lower Newton.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I don't understand, the prevailing wind is not out of the north, I mean.
Well, it has been the past week or so, that's why we were getting the smoke.
I was getting it even before that, right, we're getting the smoke.
I was planning on Ruble's pretty much.
Mary, anything else?
My only other comment is that we had company last week and we went out at one of the local establishments and had a wonderful dinner outside. The only detraction was the loud cars and motorcycles that would stand there in the line of traffic and rev up.
It's really annoying.
It's, it's just, we couldn't even hear ourselves talk at the table. I, I don't know how you enforce something like that, but it's kind of too bad it keeps away from, from the atmosphere.
She looked at me like it's me.
Yeah.
Sitting around last weekend.
Maybe the state can.
No, last weekend.
So that's just a comment.
Remember the quiet, your ride sign, so people can spend longer.
Chad?
In, because you did a terrible job today, Mr. Harrier. I just have one thing, I just want us to maybe be more consistent with city residencies with our boards. So I think it's something that we should consider making mandatory. So a majority of them, there's a few like downtown, downtown board, a couple others that are not, but just something we should think about.
And the police advisory will be.
And the police advisory boards will be involved, but for majority of them, I think city residencies will be.
And I, I agree with Chad. I think we state that right upfront when we're looking for applications, must be city resident. Nip it in the bud and let's move. If no one, if no one comes in, then we need a, need a veto. Mr. Hawkins? I think we do.
My feelings are hurt now, I don't want to say.
Okay.
For real?
Really. Let's go back to Florida.
Right, move to item number 17. Approval of minutes.
Motion to approve minutes, 5823.
Second.
Motion second for approval of minutes, 5823.
With changes.
There's a problem.
Are there any changes or?
There's one change.
That shows that Mike McCarthy was at that meeting and.
In May, it was me.
It was Trudy.
Yeah. That's all.
Without much change.
So just a correction.
If that's acceptable to you.
Yeah, motion to approve as amended.
Second, yeah, second, Chad.
Hello, the day was aye.
Aye.
On the phone, motion passes to approve minutes.
Motion to approve warrant, 53123. Thank you, Sarah, for shortening the delay.
Second. Then I'll second the second, third, two.
Any questions on the warrants? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none.
Move to adjourn.
Fastest adjourn, second. Just missed one half hour late.